This is a regularly scheduled public session of the Woodbridge Board of Education. It is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. This meeting has been approved by resolution adopted at the reorganization meeting held on January 3, 2023. Notification has been sent to the record. Notification has also been posted to Woodbridge Borough Hall, the Woodbridge Memorial Library, TapInto.net, and the Woodbridge Board of Education website. Please be advised that all our portion of this meeting is being livestreamed in real time and will be recorded for rebroadcasting at a future date. All call.
Mr. Biemonte?
Here.
Mr. Fallon?
Here.
Mr. Garvin?
Here.
Mr. Nieves?
Present.
Mr. O'Byrne?
Here.
And Mr. Vaccaro is absent.
All right, thank you, trustees. So we're going to pause here to have some presentation recognitions and awards, and I will start with Lara. Mrs. Schmidt, sorry, Ms. Schmidt, sorry.
Here we go. Okay. We asked our grade level teachers to nominate a student on their grade level that they felt best embodied this important trait. So tonight, I'm going to just read off our students and just a little blurb as to why they were nominated. So in kindergarten, we had Stella Formasano. Not sure if she's here. Hey Stella. Stella is so generous, not only with her teachers, but with her classmates as well. She shows generosity in many different ways. She brought in gifts for all staff members throughout the holiday season. Most importantly, she is always generous with her words. She often encourages and compliments her classmates. She is an absolute well-rounded student who is an absolute joy to have at Doyle School. Congratulations Stella. Come on up. She also has the best shoes and hair. In grade one, we had Jason Maroon. Jason. Stella, stay here with me. We're going to take a picture. Jason is kind and caring. He is generous with his time and his things. He constantly helps others whenever they may need a friend. He has a sincere smile and a generous heart for everyone he meets. In grade two, we have Damian DiMarco. Damian. Hi Damian, come on up. Damian is an all-around kind person to all of his classmates and his teachers. He is a hard worker and is always willing to lend a hand to anyone at any time. We're so proud of you Damian. And last but not least, this is a two-year-in-a-row kid. Whoa. Lydia Bazarelli, come on up. Lydia is always so kind to everyone. She is always willing to help others out, whether it be with schoolwork, sharing her supplies, or being a good friend to others. Lydia is always generous to everyone she meets. Congratulations Lydia. And this is our Doyle School December Students of the Month.
Keith, don't go too far.
Doyle School will not show us up. We have three wonderful students coming out of the intermediate school for Students of the Month. Coming out of the fourth grade, we have Christopher Kennedy. Christopher Kennedy, come on up here, Christopher. Where are you, Christopher? All right, Christopher is a student. That is hardworking, spirited, helpful, a good listener, and extremely kind and generous. While Christopher enjoys all of his classes, his favorite subject is PE. Good choice, good choice. He loves being active and playing sports and would love to be an NFL player someday, just like his favorite player. Who's your favorite? Saquon Barkley, that's what I have it written right here, and his role model as well. So nice job, Christopher. Coming all the way out of the fifth grade, we have Ms. Isla Carter seated over here to my right. Come on up, Isla, come on up. Isla is kind, hardworking, conscientious with her work, always tries her best in class, and is a good friend to so many of her peers. She always strives to do well and is never afraid to ask for help when she needs it. Her favorite subjects are math and science. She loves math because she likes to push herself to solve difficult problems, and she likes science because she loves to learn about living things. For her future, she is open to many ideas such as playing soccer. Playing soccer, being an artist, or even being a professional musician, playing, if you play the flute? I'm playing the flute. All right. So nice job, Isla. A round of applause for her. Okay. And going up to our big guy up in the sixth grade, we have Charlie Canizaro. Come on up here, Charlie, come on. Charlie's in the sixth grade. He's not allowed to stay in the intermediate school much longer. He's unfortunately taller than me. Charlie is kind, friendly, charismatic, and conscientious with his work. He is eager to learn and encourages others to do well by displaying his exceptional work ethic. Charlie's favorite subjects in school are math, English, music, and PE. Sorry, science got left out. Outside of school, he enjoys playing video games, playing outside, that's nice to hear, and being with his brother, wherever he is. There you go. Nice. He also plays football and aspires to play professional football someday. Nice big round of applause for Charlie Canizaro.
For the high school, grades seven through 12. For seventh grade, we have Jaden Oruwella. Jaden, come on up. Some of the things that Jaden's teacher said are he's diligent, motivated, kind, and a generous person. He stays on task in class, helps a teacher, he demonstrates interest in the subject beyond class requirements, and volunteers to help students. Jaden is someone who will find joy in whatever we are learning. In the eighth grade, we have Annabella Coppola. Come on up. Annabella is very dedicated to her work and studies. She puts in great effort and works efficiently. She's kind to others and works well with classmates. She's involved outside of the classroom as well, and she always helps with the eighth For the ninth grade, we have Ava Lorenzo. Don't believe she's here. All right, so Ava, Ava always has a smile on her face, and she's very respectful to her peers and teachers. Ava is a team player and is always willing to help others out. You will always get a please and thank you from Ava. For the 10th grade, we have Adon Rodriguez. Adon always strives to be his best potential. He's very respectful and displays great manners. He's very caring and empathetic and gets along well with his peers. For the 11th grade, we have Alana Ambrogio. Alana works hard in all her classes. She's always so polite and respectful to both her peers and teachers. Alana is a very consistent and intelligent student who always sees the positive in things. And for the 12th grade, we have Luisa Rodriguez Suarez, who is not here. Luisa is an extremely hardworking student with a pleasant and positive attitude. She's always willing to help her peers. Luisa never gives up and always has a smile on her face. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations.
All right, so as exciting as the past 10 minutes has been, the rest of it will not be. So I will pause for about 30 seconds, no, about a minute. If students, parents, congratulations, but you go if you want, and then we'll get to our regular session here. Emily, you're up. Student report.
Since the last meeting, Woodbridge High School has welcomed two new teachers, Ms. Glavin, the New World History teacher, and Dr. T, the new yearbook teacher. Both teachers have had a positive feedback, everyone emphasizing on the comfort they feel with Ms. Glavin and the creative freedom encouraged by Dr. T. Seniors are starting to hear back from colleges with the acceptances becoming greater each day. Guidance has created a board where students can announce their acceptances outside the office. In the spring, Woodbridge High School is holding a college fair. We will be collaborating with local stakeholders, universities, colleges, and trade schools. We also had graduates who are serving in the military come back and speak to students interested in pursuing that future. Drama Club has begun practicing for the spring musical of Legally Blonde, and this coming week, the students will partake in midterms, the first in-school assessment of midterms since 2019, finally showing our return to normalcy after COVID.
Trustees, comments, questions, concerns? No concerns. Thank you, Emily. All right. So you're going to project up here, Tony?
Yes.
All right, so board, if we want, getting to the first row, Tony's actually going
Thank you, Mike. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, this evening I present the Fall 2022 Start Strong Administration's Report for our school district. The Start Strong assessments were issued in the early fall for students in grades four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 in language arts, also in mathematics, and then also including Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II, and science, I believe, in grade, if I recall, six, nine, and 12. So it touched upon a little bit of everybody in the fall. It was taken online. It was intended to be very quick, much quicker than the NJSLA, which takes place in the Now, the Start Strong assessments are intended to produce information to be used as a standards-based complement to the resources used by educators in their classrooms to evaluate the needs of students. The great thing about Start Strong is as soon as the students are done, we have the results. We don't have to wait for the state to send to something. They'll send us reports later on, but we know right away what the results are. They are administered quickly, in person, provide immediate results. Start Strong Fall 2022 assessments do not, and the state asked me to emphasize, replace local standards-based benchmark assessments districts may already have in place. They do not replace the Spring 2023 New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, NJSLA, statewide summit of assessments, or are predictive of their results. So as the state wants us to emphasize, Start Strong is not a predictor of success on the NJSLA, which will follow in the springtime. It's really designed to take a look back and to see what the students have mastered in the year prior, so that we can remediate and accelerate and move forward. The design is based upon a subset of prioritized prior-year academic standards to provide a data point on the level of support a student may need to engage in grade-level content. For example, a grade-five ELA Start Strong assessment is aligned to a subset of the NJSLS for the previous year, grade four. Example, Algebra I Start Strong assessment is aligned to grade-eight learning standards relevant to algebraic concepts. It uses, it recycles, if you will, released high-quality items that were previously used in the NJSLA. They contained efficient question types to produce on-demand results for educators. They could be administered in 45 to 60 minutes. Note, again from the state, the test design, which allowed for shortened testing time and immediate results, means that Start Strong results must be interpreted and used differently than NJSLA results. They do not cover the breadth and depth of standards as seen on the NJSLA, and they do not support the same comparisons or inferences about student proficiency. But again, talking about the immediate results, we can see the question that was given to the child, see the child's response to the question. NJSLA doesn't give you the questions. They give you the standard that was being discussed, but Start Strong literally gives you the question and tells you the student's answer. So again, as a reminder, when we talk about English Language Arts, if a student took it in grade four this fall, it's really based upon grade-three ELA content, and then advancing grades, it's a look back to the year before, given that it's an early fall, following the summer, there being a assessment on what they should have mastered in the previous grade level. Same thing for math. In the math testing, there are some manipulative and reference materials that are given, and again, grade four is grade-three math. Unfortunately for them, they don't get any reference materials. They don't get to use a calculator. In grade five, it goes back to grade four. In grade six, back to grade five, but now they can start to use materials that are supplied. Grade seven is based upon grade six. Grade eight is based upon grade seven. As we move into the high school math courses, if a student is enrolled in Algebra I, they are assigned the Algebra I Start Strong test, which is based upon grade-eight math content with a focus on standards relevant to algebraic concepts. The student will be provided with the Start Strong Algebra I and Geometry Mathematics Reference Sheet. They can have a calculator. When we see the results later on, keep in mind that we have a section of ninth graders that took Algebra I as an assessment last year in eighth grade. So this year, those students aren't taking the Algebra I Start Strong, they're taking the Geometry Start Strong. Science, grades six, nine, and 12, and it's encompassing more of a grade span. So the science test in grade six encompasses concepts in grade three through five. They are permitted to have a calculator for some of the computations. In grade nine, they refer to as middle-school, science content will be six through eight. They're supplied with the periodic table of elements, as well as a scientific calculator. And in grade 12, it's based upon nine through 12, science content. They are supplied with the periodic table of elements, as well as access to a graphing Things that we have to consider when looking at the results, consider the impacts of COVID on learning. Districts should not compare any individual student, school, district, Start Strong data to any NJSLA data. Whereas recently, we've seen in the media stories about the most recently completed NJSLA, those comparisons to other districts and districts in the state, the Start Strong data that we get does not give comparisons to performance in the state. It's solely internal to your district. Districts should not compare, as I said, material. Please note that the Start Strong assessments were not designed to predict future student performance on the NJSLA, nor was it designed to estimate what score a student would have received if they had taken the NJSLA in spring 2022. Start Strong assessment provide a data point to support district-level curriculum planning and revisiting prerequisite concepts and skills, evaluating scope and sequence based on distribution of student support needs, providing professional learning supports for differentiation, scaffolding based on student results, aligned to principles and practices outlined in the Department of Education Learning Acceleration Guide, and using the individual student reports for conversation between parents and teachers on where their child might need support at the beginning of the school year. The department encourages districts to clearly and prominently provide information about the context of Start Strong data, including its limitations as a result of the pandemic or other factors. As always, assessment data should be analyzed alongside other important measures of student outcomes like benchmark assessments given in-house, teacher-created formative assessments, report card grades, and attendance data to provide a more complete perspective on resources supporting student success. At this point, every child who took the Start Strong in the fall should have had an individual student report sent home to the families for review. This is an example of how you would look at results for language arts. In this example, it's a district that has multiple elementary schools, and it shows you the columns. This way, you serve as a reference when I show you our data. The first piece of data, the state requires me to inform you how many students actually completed the assessment. Obviously, the purpose of that is to determine whether there were enough students completing the assessment to determine whether it's valid as an assessment. So those are our numbers, grades four through 10, language arts, grades five through nine, 10, maybe 11, and mathematics, and then science, six, nine, and 12. In language arts, in Start Strong, there are three levels or ratings, if you will, and nothing is pass/fail. The ratings are... My thing works here. Less support, some support, and more support. So basically, based upon the cut score of the student, it determines whether they need a little bit of support, some support, or more support. And in our case, the data listed for you is by grade level, grades four through 10, English Language Arts, the specific number count of students, and then to the right, percentage of the class. For example, fourth grade, 29% of the students indicated more support needed. 20% of the students indicated some support needed, whereas 51% of the students required less support. And that is listed for each grade level in grades four through 10. And this will be up on our website tomorrow morning. Mathematics, a similar design, some different test titles between Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II, and a reminder that the eighth-grade results do not include the students who were in algebra last year as eighth graders and now are in ninth grade as geometry students. Their results count in the geometry results. So for example, seventh grade, 27% of the students need more support, 34 need some, and 42 need less. In science, three grades, if I'm looking at grade six, 30% of our sixth graders need more support, 40 need some, and 30 needs less. And of course, the state doesn't tell you between what's less or more or some. Basically, the scores are staggered as such to tell you that the student got more wrong than right, got close to middle, and got more right than wrong. Everyone needs some sort of support. Now, I'm also obliged to report out on our subgroups. So from a subgroup perspective, in language arts, we're looking at the district percentages and then any other subgroup that is represented by more than nine students. So we have female and male, Asian-American, Black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, white, IEP, 504 students, economically disadvantaged, and non-economically disadvantaged. So in the case of language arts, as a district, our female and male, 27% of our females need more, 27% need some, and 47 need less. And it's very close with our male population. 32% need more support, 22% need some, and less support is needed for 46% of those students. And that's English all the way through grades four through 10. In mathematics, we have a similar setup. However, we have one additional subgroup in terms of English language learners. Our new students who are identified as English language learners in their first assessment do not have to take the language arts portion of it. They do take the math. So there aren't enough students in the language arts to put a result up there, but we did have enough students in mathematics take the assessment. So looking at ELLs, for example, 50% of our students in ELLs in mathematics need more support, 44% need some support, and 6% need less support. And of course, this is inclusive of students who entered our country or even just our school this past September. Science, the same thing. If I were to look at IEP versus 504, 84% of our students with an IEP need more support as compared to 63% for a 504 child. 16% of our students need some support with an IEP as compared to 33% students with a 504. None of our students scored in the less support area with IEPs, and 4% of our 504 students were identified as less support needed. Now, what we do with the results, and as I mentioned earlier, we get to look at the results right after the test is taken and then wait for the state total reports. So one thing that we look at, given the information of what exactly the question was involved, involving in terms of math, language arts, or science, we analyze the question, we look for common errors. We do get reports on how many students got this question right, how many students got this question wrong, how many students picked choice A, but it wasn't right. So it gives a lot of data in terms of if you see large numbers of students answering incorrectly and choosing the same incorrect response, that gives a chance for the administration and teachers to focus on what was missed. Is it something in terms of the curriculum, the sequence and scope? Is there a gap in the curriculum? Is it related to COVID? But that type of information gives you a good indication as to where the problem might be. Now, for a ninth grader who perhaps had not performed well in the algebra test, and it talks about eighth grade, we get the results so early in the year, those weaknesses could be targeted before we get to November or December and continue to be addressed throughout the school year. At the same time, if we find something glaring in terms of a common error, we can go back to the eighth-grade teaching staff who have the eighth graders now and say, listen, this is a result that we have. 75% of the kids picked this answer, and it's wrong. We need to look at what we're doing in eighth grade. We might not be teaching until April or May, but the results tell us that something was missed along the way. Additional intervention strategies, extended school day, our grade-seven, eight math writing labs, scaffolding instruction, small group instruction, tutoring. Obviously, for a student who took an NJSLA last spring and now has a Start Strong test in the fall, we have a little bit more data to focus on the preceding grade level and where they're going to go moving forward in their current grade level. So for the students, it is another test that they have to take. So as an educator, I'm not thrilled to hear that they have to sit down and take So as an educator, I'm not thrilled to hear that they have to sit down and take another test for the state. It is very short. Most of the questions involve one parts, but there are many questions that involve two parts. And unfortunately, when you go through the data, you can see where some students didn't know there was a second part, even though it was entirely on the first page. That's another, that's a testing strategy to remind the students that no one gets a prize for finishing first. Look at the entire page and then submit your answer. That concludes my report. And if anybody on the board has a question, and I can obviously take questions from parents either now or in our public portion of the meeting. Okay. Thank you. All right, so a little different than hearing of the citizens. I'm going to open it up to just questions on this presentation. So does anybody want to come up to the podium and ask?
Bill Switzer, 270 North Ave. Just going over that briefly. I saw geometry is 51 needs more support. That's quite a bit, and it's more than 50%. Would that be any reason we don't have a geometry teacher yet, or? That I'm going to ask later.
Again, the geometry assessment Start Strong is based upon eighth grade math and any geometric concept in eighth grade math that they might have learned. So not essentially about the geometry class. It was taken a month into school. It's really measuring the content of the preceding grade.
And, you know, I saw a lot of large percentages across the board that needed more support. Why is that, and what are we doing to improve it?
I'm sorry, could we repeat that?
Why is that, and what are your game plan to fix that?
I got it, yeah, I got it. Why is that? That's what we're trying to find out. We've been trying to research that since we've gotten the results back. Sometimes it's a matter of their experience in their course last year. And the reality is trying to address that weakness now. You can't move forward if the child hasn't mastered certain concepts. So that's been the charge of the teachers to realize that this is another piece of data that they can use. Besides the fact that they're an eighth grader or a ninth grader, this is something else that tells them that a specific concept could be remiss for the entire class because they can see the entire class's results in terms of, hey, they all got number four wrong. Tomorrow morning, I'm hitting number four. So that gives a teacher the information to attack those weaknesses right now before advancing to the next concept.
So this is a evaluation, basically, of the kids, correct?
It's an assessment of the students, yeah, sure.
Okay. Is there like an outline or something that the teachers know in advance what they should be teaching for this?
The only thing that they know about these assessments is that they're related to the state learning standards.
And they have the state learning standards.
Oh, yeah, that their lesson plans are aligned to them, their instructions are aligned to them. So in some cases, when you get these types of results and you go back to the eighth grade, for example, you know, your son took geometry as a ninth grader. So going back to the eighth grade, looking at that ninth grade class, and that, those results represent a very small group of students because only a few students were in ninth grade taking geometry this fall.
Yeah.
You can now identify and go back to a teacher and identify what's been missed. Did you not spend enough time on it? You know, in the past, before COVID, you might have spent five or six lessons on it. Maybe now's the time that, given the results, we need to spend more time on it moving forward because now you have those results that tell you that.
All right. And just, this is a quick question. You had scaffolding instruction on page 20, what is that?
Basically, it's a way for teachers to implement a strategy that involves, I'm going to show you how, we're going to do it together, and then you're going to do it independently, rather than simply, here you go, guys, here it is, get started. I'm going to model instruction for you, we're going to answer things together, and then you're going to have the chance to do things independently with the teacher here. So obviously, to support if someone's not doing well. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Melissa Cruz. I just had a question. Is it, are we thinking about maybe bringing back double block for ELA after looking at these results?
For which grade level?
For seventh and eighth grade.
Given, one of the problems that we have is, given the NJSLA results in the time that we had the double block, the results unfortunately are not a great deal better. Right now, as administrators, we're trying to determine whether it's more time or it's the quality of the time, the frequency of the class meeting. Those are all things being considered.
Okay, and I guess we broke down, did we find like the top three things that our kids struggled with? Or was it across the board very mixed?
In, in language arts, for example, the writing aspects are very short. So it's more, it's basically, it's a close reading comprehension where students are, the text is side by side with the questions, and of course, they're supposed to go back and find it within the text. We also get results of how fast the test was taken. And unfortunately, some students just blow through it. And if they had a chance to go back, and the teachers are doing this in a very, you know, you can't come out and say, hey, you got this wrong, but they can see something that the class took on the Start Strong and not realize that it is something that they took. And now we can see if the results have changed now that the teachers have targeted a certain type of instruction.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Ryan Guzliamati, 2 Rose Street. Is there vertical articulation that takes place between grade levels to discuss test scores?
Yes, of course, as you go, the articulation is natural when it comes to Start Strong because it's being taken in an advanced grade and talking about content that was mastered previously. So the building administrator under my guidance is disseminating that information and having those discussions about, hey, listen, you know, sometimes it's glaring. It's 75% of the class got a certain question wrong. It's glaring, and I urge you to go back to the teachers who taught them without impugning anybody by saying, listen, did we cover it? Did we not spend enough time on it? Did you, was it something that you realized in providing instruction and assessing that it was a sticky point? Was it a problem? Because then if it is, the data tells us in the Start Strong that the problem remains. So that articulation does take place from grade level to grade level. Now, we only had Start Strong now for two years. So I like the aspect of having that data. I don't like the aspect of having students sit through another test.
Right. Does the, the board purchase a platform within house as a benchmark assessment such as Linkit or iReady?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of that.
Does, does the district purchase a benchmark in-house assessment such as Linkit or iReady?
We have Linkit.
Linkit. And how often is that administered?
Three times a year.
Okay.
This is our second year, I believe, of Linkit.
Okay. And then my third and final question is envision the math curriculum K through eight?
It is the same publisher, Mr. Lisa, sixth grade, same publisher, but it might not be the envisioned series.
Okay. And prior to purchasing the new language arts curriculum, were test scores reviewed in correlation to how this publisher achieved towards test scores? That this is in correlation with state?
Language arts perspective?
Yes.
We didn't, we didn't have a publisher. We didn't have an anthology or a series prior to this. We were in Writers and Readers Workshop and working with classroom libraries, et cetera. So this, this new series-
With the new series, was it, was researched on on how that court? Because I know reading and writing workshop won't correlate well to core common standards, but was there research done there?
Yes. In selecting this particular series, we reached out to our colleagues in Burton County, and actually, we still have teachers visiting programs to see how it's implemented with fidelity.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Close that session.
I have a question.
Go for it.
The NJSLA, what is science given for that? 10th or 11th?
I believe it has shifted. It is now going six, nine, 12. I believe it has shifted.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is because I did notice that the one thing it said was, you know, the periodic table. They're doing that in 10th grade and expected to know that in 12th grade is not skewing these scores because, I mean, two years later, are you really going to remember? Most kids don't even understand chemistry, never mind remember it.
Mr. Fallon, to your point, one of the nuances, if you will, of a 12th grade science test which encompasses grades nine through 12, and every student will have had three sciences in nine through 12. But to your point, was it memorized? Is it ready to be recalled? The science is the newest test in the Start Strong series and usually takes the longest to get the full-fledged results back because I'm not sure if the state knows yet what they're looking for. Trustees, anything else? All right, on to our superintendent report.
Quickly, I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow starts our one-session days. The high school will dismiss at 12:13. The intermediate school and Doyle School will dismiss at 12:28. The high school students will be getting their midterm examinations. The staff and students at Doyle School, following the half-day, will have teacher-parent conferences. No lunch will be served. There is aftercare for the students who are involved in the aftercare program. Additionally, I want to let the board know and let the public know that the Woodbridge Parent Advisory Network, last week, under the direction of Mrs. Poney Taylor and Ms. Hill and some students from the high school, put on a STEM workshop for students at the intermediate school. We had about five or six students attend, and we were fortunate to have five or six volunteers from the high school attend for one-to-one instruction. Mrs. Taylor had a great, I'll say, cute project involving Rapunzel and her hair, et cetera. And the kids created models and had a great time, and we're looking forward to future events similar to that. Lastly, a reminder to all of our families in the room and at home that with regards to eligibility for free or reduced lunch, that can take place at any time. There's really no deadline about it. Unfortunately, in these times, family situations change. And if your family situation should change such that you might be eligible to receive free or reduced lunch, it's a matter of going on our website, on the Parents tab, on their lunch program, and downloading an application, sending it to your child's principal or main office, and then getting advanced to the business department. Mrs. Murray, did you miss something? In real time. You can also access it in real time via the parent portal. But it can be done at any time. It's not a deadline of a certain date. It could be done at any time because that situation can change for a family at any time. And that concludes my report.
Trustees, comments, questions? All right. Approval minutes upon the recommendation of superintendent, the Board of Education, improvements to the following meeting, executive and work session meeting, December 19th. Can I get a first? Mr. Fallon, second. Mr. O'Byrne, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Gorvan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Vicaro is absent. Mr. Biomonte?
Yes.
Mr. Nieves?
Yes.
Trustees, I'm going to take us through our resolutions, then we'll come back to new business or unfinished business. Curriculum instruction, approval of home instruction, edgeseer, courses extension, approval of home instruction, approval of field trip requests, approval to out-of-district placement, approval of evaluation requests, approval of transport change, approval of professional development requests, approval of guest speaker, journalism club revision, approval of student-teachers classroom observation, field experience internship, approval of mentor, approval of field trip requests, approval of new transportation, approval of terminated school instruction at PHP placement, approval of professional development requests. Onto personnel, acceptance of resignation, another acceptance of resignation, approval of chaperones, two of those, one which includes Munaki, approval of appointment of a substitute, approval of a co-curricular appointment for the 2223 school year, approval of a coaching appointment, approval of a revision to request for leave of absence, approval of home instruction personnel, approval of requests for leave of absence, the next four, Munaki, which include Munaki, approval of revision to request for leave of absence, approval of requests for leave of absence, approval of revised payment schedule for extracurricular activity, approval of the high school sixth-period teaching stipends 2223. Onto policy, we have two. One, approval of policies, the last, which is approval of regulation. Buildings and grounds, we have approval of facility request and another, which includes Munaki, approval of facility request. Onto finance, we have approval of the bills list, approval of the monthly financial report to the board secretary and treasurer, approval of the certification of a balanced budget, approval of the budget transfers, approval of the fund raisers, approval acceptance of donation, includes Munaki, approval acceptance of donation as well. And finally, onto our board operations, we have approval of the 2324 Woodbridge School District calendar, approval of the cooperative athletic programs, affirmation of superintendent's report incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, otherwise known as HIB within the district, approval of the health and safety evaluation of school buildings checklist SOA 2223, approval of the parent transportation contract for the 2223 school year, approval of a new vendor, and lastly, approval of a contract agreement between the Woodbridge Education Association and the Woodbridge Board of Education. Trustees, comments, questions? All right, I'm going to open it up to the hearing of citizens on resolutions only. Hearing none, seeing? No, that would be for the next one. Nope, nope. All right, I'm going to close the hearing, citizens, for here in the audience. Ms. Murray, do we have anything that was posted online?
No, we do not.
All right. I will close. Trustees, looking for your support, which includes Munaki, curriculum instruction 1, 3, 7, 9, 10, and 12, personnel 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, 11, 12 through 14, policy 1 and 2, buildings and ground 2, finance 1 through 5 and number 7, board operations 1, 2, and 4 through 7. We do not have any for the addendum. Can I get a first? Mr. Fallon, Mr. Biomonte, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Gorvan?
Yes, but I'm going to abstain from board operations number seven.
Mr. O'Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Vicaro is absent. Mr. Biomonte?
Yes.
Mr. Nieves?
Yes. Trustees, looking for your support, which is Woodbridge only, curriculum instruction 2, 4, 5, 6, 8, 11, 13, and 14, personnel 2, 4, 6, 8, and 10, none for policy, buildings and grounds 1, finance 6, board operations 3. Can I get a first? Mr. Gorvan, Mr. O'Byrne, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Gorvan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Vicaro is absent. Mr. Biomonte?
Yes.
Mr. Nieves?
Yes. All right, before I open it up to the hearing of citizens, congratulations. A number of us went through the process with the Woodbridge Education Association. So we did approve that tonight. I don't see anybody out there, but we worked good and hard at it. So glad to see that that's finally closed. Trustees, do you have anything for unfinished business or new business, either one? Rich, you did talk about February tech committee meeting that we want to have. So I don't know if you want to say something about that?
Yeah, I would like to come up with a couple of dates for early February so we can, as a tech committee, and finalize any plans for future.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open it up to the hearing of citizens here in the audience. Anything you want to speak about?
Ryan Guzliamati, I'm back. I wanted to address something that Mr. Alvo spoke about in his superintendent address, but also something else I came here to speak about tonight. In regards, my son is only in kindergarten. In regards to parent-teacher conferences, is this the first year that there are no evening conferences scheduled?
The goal is between the fall evening conference and the teacher conferences during January. The goal is to invite all parents to participate. Depends upon whether they choose to participate or not.
But is this the first year in January that there are four half-days and no evening conference?
This is the first year. The move was to move the evening conference to the fall in all three schools, and the four days of half-days remain the same.
So I'm assuming was the, I know it was approved tonight, the contract. I'm assuming this was ratified in the negotiations with the WREA. So if a parent cannot attend a daytime conference in addition to needing childcare for four days consecutively, following a week of a four-day week, preceding two weeks of two four-day weeks, there is not only no opportunity to meet with his or her teacher, but also a strained demand on parents to find four days of childcare. And if you were not invited to a conference in November, there would then be no evening opportunity for parents in the school year. Was a community survey put out to parents seeing- Was a community survey put out to parents, seeing if that would work for them? So that was just a board decision to, to remove the availability?
It wasn't, well, it was a joint decision between the WREA and the board. One of the things that was brought up is in the event that that was an issue because it didn't come back into the fall, that there could be accommodations that were made so that a parent would, we're not going to tell a parent just because of accommodations, which, which you're saying is totally fair and is a likely situation, that they wouldn't be able to have an opportunity to spend time with the teacher.
So I, I would just ask the board that moving forward in next round of negotiation, that a community survey be put out to see if the needs of parents, and I, I'm a NJEA member myself, so I understand that it was probably due to equity among staff between high school midterms. I get it. I understand all of it. But on the parent end of it, I think that availability needs to be sought in evening conferences, and four half-days is a strain on families. Thank you.
Is it the four half-days?
It's both.
Outside of the, okay, so it's just a regular strain regardless of?
It's four half-days, and should a parent need to attend a conference in that given time? They need to not only find childcare outside of the school day, they need to find childcare to attend the conference during the day.
So that's right, so that part, so if that does become a challenge, and we need, we do need parents to reach out to us because we will have to make accommodations for that.
Right. Thank you.
I just want to follow up regarding the trailers, to see where we are for the fall regarding the trailers at Doyle.
So on February, so I was waiting for the question, so on February 22nd, we're actually going to have a meeting here. We are trying to figure out the logistics of it. It is likely to start a little bit earlier than like a six o'clock. We're going to open up early, maybe closer to five, if that's not confirmed yet. But we're going to open it up, we're going to have our representatives from both the board, both from mayor and council. We will have some things to distribute, to look at, and there we will go over what the plans are, where we're going to expand, what it's going to look like, what we might have to do as far as the second question. So we will open it up there. We will also be talking about putting together a committee of parents. So I wanted to get that out of the way, to talk about that first. So it's February 22nd, the date is locked in, the time's, you know, TBD, but it's going to be early. From a trailer perspective, we already had approved, what?
Modular.
Modular. We had already approved, sorry about that. We had already approved the, it does, the modulars from a budget standpoint, so we had approved that as part of the, I will say, design, and what we are working with mayor and council on is where to actually put those in the, in the event that we need them. We also will have information on when we expect to break ground, which will also have an impact on whether or not we will need modulars, and if we do, where we will put them. So all of that will be coming on the 22nd.
Okay, and also, I asked if this staff would be surveyed to see if they would feel that trailers or modules were better than having bigger classrooms, so I just wonder if that was done and if we have the results.
Not yet, but I'll turn that over to Tony.
The comments from the administrators canvassing the teachers, there's obviously excitement over the prospect of a new expansion, building, whatever have you, and realizing that in between, making an, you're going to break a few eggs. Being that we don't know for certain what population will be in trailers, it could be a full-size classroom, it could be a smaller related service classroom. Those conversations have not been held yet because we're not sure yet what's going to be out there. And when we are know for sure what we're going to need those module units for, then targeted conversations will take place about whether it's the right place or not. Because I am anticipating the question, Mrs. Cruz, the kindergarten for next September, as of about 5:30 today, is 20 students short than the same time last year. Doesn't mean anything, but right now, as you know, we're looking at the kindergarten enrollment because that determines a great deal of the moves in the building.
I mean, to be honest with you, the first-grade classroom, my child's not there, so I'm not here every month complaining, but if my child was there, I would be because they're about 25, and for a first-grade room, they should be opening another section going into second grade, which I know is not going to happen, but it should be from an educational standpoint. But that's here or there. But I also just want to give kudos to the journalism club at the intermediate school. It's an excellent club that's opened. I think that the teacher's doing a fabulous job, she's bringing in some really great guest speakers, and my daughter's really enjoying it. So thank you for bringing that to them.
Maureen Herman, 314 Innis Road. Hi. So I have a question. It's kind of a timely news question regarding our district's materials reconsideration and challenge policy. I kind of went, like, looked my best to try to find what I could find. And to my, best of my knowledge, I found policy number 9130, which is identified as public complaints and grievances. I believe that's, from what I read through it, to me, that sounded like a reconsideration and challenge materials policy. Um, I guess I just have a couple of questions about it, and I know it's not something you think about every day, so let me just see if I can ask my basic questions. Question one is, the policy was adopted in 2001. So I'm just curious, in 21 years, have we had any reason to revisit or make any changes to that policy? I think, I think we're all aware that this is sort of a timely, newsworthy issue, and it's happening in New Jersey. I can tell you from my professional experience as a public librarian, I have colleagues who are members of NJASL, and it's, it's happening. There's book and challenges in New Jersey as well. So my que, that was my one question, I see it's very old, so I didn't know if it's been revisited or if we've had an opportunity to relook at that policy.
To, to be honest, first off, in terms of policy, I would speculate that if you were to check any other Board of Education in New Jersey, you'll find that the date on that policy is very similar. The reason why is that there's a, a policy generating organization that we all subscribe to. And when things change in the times and change in terms of law, you know, for example, HIB, we've gotten free policy revisions in the last 18 months. So as things change, we do get policy revisions. Having heard your concern, I will look at the policy tomorrow and see if there's anything I need to refer to the policy committee about revising to update things. And I, and Mrs. Herman, I know you'll do it, you'll see other policies that are just as dated. And over time, whether the company decides to give us those updates, we will continue to look at them and see where we have to make our changes.
Okay. And I appreciate that. Like I said, I, it was just old, it's 21 years, I mean-
Can I add something to that? So about a year ago, I did have our policy looked at by Strauss, Sma, and NJ, SBA. So to make sure that our policies were up to date because of that exact concern, I was worried about a lot of older policies. And everything was gone through, you'll probably have noticed the beginning of last year, there was a ton of abolishments and changes of things that were missed, that for whatever reason didn't go through, and we made all of those changes to make sure that everything was up to date. If there are no changes, it doesn't typically get re-approved, it just stays as it was during that time period.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Fallon. Also regarding that policy, so the first line of the policy says that any person or group having a legitimate interest in the school of the district may present and request, whatever, about a complaint. Any person, meaning the person does not have to have a student in the school, it can just be a community member? Okay, so it doesn't have to be a, a parent or guardian, it's just any community member can make a complaint. Okay. Um-
They don't even have to be in our community.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So also, then, looking specifically, I mean, a lot of the policy deals with, you know, personal complaints or whatever about the way things are happening, but for actual items, point five of the policy talks about complaints about instructional or resource materials. So I guess my one question is, does that, how does teacher libraries, like, how do classroom libraries fit into that? Because classroom libraries are usually purchased by a teacher or donated by a parent, not necessarily purchased with, you know, taxpayer money. So I don't know if a teacher's classroom library falls under those same complaint policies.
We do have very generous teachers that spend money out of their own pocket to buy things for their classroom, and before they purchase anything that's going to be used instructionally, they have to pass it to their building administrator. Any other, any other material that the district buys, the same thing applies.
Right.
You know, we have, we have very generous parents as well that donate books to us, and we go through them for the condition and relevancy to the topic, you know, in one respect, the person's getting rid of them, hoping we'll take them.
I completely understand on that.
Yes, I know you do. I know you do. It's really, they really are good books, but you might not need all of them.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Gotcha. Okay. That's good to know as well. And then my last question on this policy was, in, in that same paragraph five, the superintendent shall appoint a committee of professional staff members, this was if a complaint about materials was brought, a committee, a committee of professional staff members and community representatives to review the challenged material. How are the community representatives selected, and is the complainant involved in that? Like, are they on the community representative panel?
I, in terms of that committee, if you will, the administrator's going to receive the complaint. It's not a hearing for the complainant to discuss with the committee. The complainant's going to make their concerns or grievances known to the administrator. The administrator's going to bring it to the committee to discuss how, if it really exists, how it could be remediated and addressed for the future. But it's, it's not a formal hearing where someone's going to come and testify. That's what a board means for, quite honestly. Where anybody, you know, we've heard from, from residents concerned about parking at Doyle School without a kid in our school district. They, they can, this is an avenue to make, to raise a concern. I won't say complaint, I'll say raise a concern. So knocking on wood, in terms of your particular concern, we haven't received many concerns, knock on wood. Doesn't mean we're not going to.
Right.
But assure the superintendent, probably before he goes to bed tonight, we'll read the policy.
I, I appreciate that, and, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mrs. Herman, real quick, my apologies, what was the policy number that you said against?
It is 9130, and it's titled Public Complaints and Grievances.
Last time, last meeting we were here, you said the mayor was going to be presenting tonight. What happened to that?
I said that we would have the answer tonight. I actually wanted to-
So what's the answers? What's the answers?
I'm sorry. That we're going to meet on February 22nd.
Okay.
Um, I would actually like to have done it, you know, sooner or earlier in February. I'm not going to be here, so are some other board members due to either personal or business travel. So the 22nd would, would work best for all of us to at least be somewhat present. Um, so that's when we're going to have the meeting, that's when we're going to expose anything. I'm sure things will, you know, we'll be talking to the public, there'll be things that you hear, but the official meeting will be the 22nd, and that's where you'll be able to ask questions, see some things in writing or paper, et cetera.
Okay. And I did hear you say something about breaking ground, so.
What Melissa was asking about the modulars was, depending on when we break ground, right, obviously, from our perspective, we want to do so, you know, ASAP.
When you, when you say breaking ground, you already have an idea of what you're doing?
We have, we have two options that we are looking at. One, one would be, I mean, the, the most viable one's going to be down at Doyle, and expanding on that, depending on where we will, when we will break ground, how that will impact the classes, some of it, you know, Tony talked to us for us kindergarten, et cetera, where the modulars will be, we have to discuss. So we've got three weeks to go through that, but everything is probably 90, 95% done.
All right. My next question, and I've probably asked this for the last five months, are we still anywhere near getting in a geometry teacher?
So I don't believe that we've received a resume at, yep, so I'll, Tony.
At this point, Mrs. Zach plans to return, first day of the fourth marking period.
First day of the fourth marking period, so another quarter from now.
In the interim, I don't have a teacher to put in there.
Okay. Were you missing any other teachers right now?
Pardon?
Are we missing any other teachers?
Other teachers?
Yeah.
Uh, I've been looking for a long time for a high school technology teacher. We currently need a school's psychologist, we need a learning disabilities teacher consultant. We just approved a resignation tonight for a first-grade teacher that we've advertised. We had a resignation at the last board meeting for a fifth-grade teacher and had very few resumes. There are many positions, and as I, you and I have had this discussion, we are not alone.
Yeah, I hear you. Oh, you said technology. Do you have something in the works for that right now without the teacher, or somebody doing that, or?
We have a resignation, so they're still here.
Oh, okay.
And we're hoping to have someone replace those services before they leave, otherwise we're going to have to find ways amongst our existing child study team to cover until we find somebody. But regardless of the position, the quantity of applicants is minimal, unfortunately.
Yeah. Um, one other thing, I just, quick question, and this is just off the top of my head. Page 24 of this booklet here, you have $8,000 for a flag football high school? Is that correct?
Yes, it's a donation from the New York Jets for that program.
Four thousand's from the Jets, correct, or did I read that wrong?
Four thousand for uniform and equipments, and four thousand towards the coaching, et cetera. Eight thousand dollars in total.
Okay. And that's just a donation, there's no money coming from the school on that, or?
Right now, this is the first year of the program, and they're trying to get it off the ground. It's not recognized as an NJSI sport, but it's something that they started in the last few years, it's very popular. This is solely funded right now by this grant.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because I believe, I've been told, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the high school soccer boys, their, the money they get annually is only a thousand dollars?
They're, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
So we're, we're getting $8,000 for a flag football team?
Correct.
But our high school boys soccer team is getting a thousand dollars annually?
Right, correct.
Okay. It just seems like a disparity.
This is a program that the Jets are running.
Okay.
And this is the amount of money they're awarding as a grant to try to get the program off the ground.
Okay.